...police. And over the years, we've attempted to keep our salaries and benefits at a level that was comparable, competitive with other agencies, so we could retain a high quality of police, probably the most important service we have in the town. And in so many ways, over the years that I served, there are a number of things where we found the importance of our own department here. In the case of safety, I recall one of the early years on Oak Grove, a divided street between Mellow and Atherton, our police were apprehending two burglars. One burglar looked at his Atherton police badge and said, "You know, you can't arrest us here where in Mellow Park." They thought they were in the other city. The other one said to him, "I told you, we never go into Atherton. Your chances of getting caught there are very high." And indeed, the figures showed that statewide, the averages for apprehension in our state was eight percent. For Atherton, it was 50 percent. Huge. I mean, there's no question about the importance, not only in terms of our safety, but in terms of health. One of the people in our town who provided significant money for defibrillators in our police car was one who had a heart attack. He called 9/11. The first one to respond was our police, not the fire department, not the paramedics. And in his mind, it probably saved his life. And I think it's so important that the functions and the benefits of having a strong police, and you're only going to have that when we pay at a fair and competitive rate. I can relate to that. One summer, when we were at Lake Tahoe, as we do each summer, a group of bicyclists came by and one had clapped, a middle-aged individual. And my older, our younger daughter was a paramedic firefighter in San Francisco. They came to our place to try to call. She went over and was trying to help this person. When the paramedics arrived, they didn't have the proper equipment, or at least know how to use that. And she was in San Francisco, where they were on call all the time. So what a difference it makes when you have people that are really qualified. And we have that in this town, and we need to pay these people a fair price. You know, we had a time when we were a bit of an impasse, and our city manager was dealing with the negotiation. They turned it over to a labor attorney, who happened to be Alan Carlson, before he ever came on the council. He was an Atherton resident, a labor attorney, and entered into negotiation. It was a fair one. He knew that all of our interest was tied in with having a good department that was well compensated. Otherwise, we're not going to keep our good people, and we're not going to attract good people. And after that was over, the police responded, that they'd never had the experience like that, where somebody was representing the town, who looked at it, that were interested the same, our police department and our town, to come with a fair settlement. That's indeed what happened. And so I would encourage you to do as we have in the past, the importance of properly paying our people with the benefits. And that's why we're going to keep this one of the safest communities in the state, and certainly where we have certainly realized major benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Malcolm. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak at this time? Steve Martin? Yes?
Jim Asti, 7 Lloyd Drive. As usual, I will totally disagree with my dear pal Malcolm, as we have for over 40 years. Okay? This is the largest single budget item in our budget, and we have to look at it carefully. Now, I'm not going to talk about salaries and benefits and all that, because we're all going to go through that. I want some things to think about. Is one, in looking at the staff command, it would appear that we have seven supervisors, a captain, a lieutenant, and five sergeants, to supervise 12 officers and four dispatchers. That's one supervisor for every two police. The command structure is out of balance, and expensive at the top end, does not produce results at the low end. Second, the second item is, in looking at the complaint calls from the city manager's report the last couple of weeks, a lot of these calls could probably be handled by a community service officer. Seems we stopped his panics for driving without license, we bus construction crews for working early, and we break up teen parties. We don't need a full sworn officer at $80,000 plus benefits to do this job. Get some community service officers at half price, put them on a payroll. And you guys have got to address this financial situation. This can't continue. Thirdly, you need to, in your financial duties, solicit bids from the Sheriff's Department, Ridwood City, or Mellow Park, to see if they can provide these services for less cost. None of the officers would be lost, they would be hired by other agencies, they would not lose their jobs, or their benefits, or their salary, which is key. Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to support the police department. Atherton is a very unique community. It's a second, it's just the code of the United States. And it is in an area that is really under threat. Crime is increasing. It's a dangerous world out there, and the police, in large part, stand between us, our properties, and those that would attack it. And beyond that, there are 10 schools within the community, where children come from other communities, be in school every day. And I think we have a moral and civic responsibility to police those areas and make those safe for the students that come. Following on this, as part of the moment, is talk about this would be the parcel tax. I personally walked the streets of the last two parcel tax campaigns, because I strongly support that. In my business, I manage commercial property. I manage 14 million square feet of commercial property throughout the Silicon Valley, and almost all of those areas hire private security, because the police cannot secure those properties. And I can tell you what that costs. I think the parcel tax in Atherton might be $720 parcels, probably roughly that. At my house, it's $60 a month. And to hire a security patrol to come buy a property, drive by a property, three or four times a night, costs $950 a month, on average. And we're getting that for $60 a month, on average. And the quality of our officers, our force, our chief, is far beyond anything I can hire in the marketplace. And so we're very short-sighted not to support the police, not to fund these items that are critical to our community. Thank you very much.
See another public comment?
Yes, I'm Stephen Goldby, and I live at 180 Stockbridge Avenue. I'd like to echo what two of the speakers have said. I think that the police department is the thing that really distinguishes Atherton as a community. And the level of security and safety that our police department provides, I think, is the reason why this community has the property values that it has, and why we feel the level of security we do. In addition to living here, my wife and I have a home in Nevada, in a community where the policing is outsourced to the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department does not respond to residential alarms unless there's an eyewitness. And as this gentleman has said, we employ a private security firm to provide the kind of security that we get here in Atherton for our tax dollars. I think the fact that our alarm system is wired into the police department, which takes responsibility for responding to those alarms, is a definite value that we're all getting for our tax dollars. If we were to outsource to the Sheriff's Department, I'm sure that value would disappear. And I think that if the council has set as its standard to provide compensation, which allows us to retain the quality of people that we have, I think that is the right standard, and I'm completely supportive of that policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Another public comment, please.
Thank you very much, council. The parcel tax is coming up, I believe this fall, requires a two-thirds vote, that's 66%. If John Rogero is correct, it doesn't matter when there's a tax vote, 25% of the people are going to vote no right off the bat. That means that only 11% is going to decide whether the parcel tax is approved or not. And the residents deserve no less than to have their tax dollars spent wisely. I've asked residents if they would consider like-kind police services. That means alarm monitoring, that means everything that the police department are offering now. If they would consider like-kind police services for less, would they be interested? The answer is always yes. Doesn't mean that they want to go for it, but they're interested in finding out about that. the residents deserve the same value that we're getting now. But I think that the council owes the residents to get an outside price in comparison for what like-kind services would cost. The sheriff or Mellow Park would be an option also. I'm satisfied with the Atherton police. I have no complaints about them. They're professional, very, very capable. The Sheriff's Department is also extremely well-trained and very, very qualified. It would be unfortunate if the parcel tax were in jeopardy, because the council had not been good stewards of the residents' tax-spent money. This happened 13 years ago. The Public Works Department was outsourced, and according to Steve Tyler, the director, he says we're saving 25%. And my knowledge, the park and the other uses in the town, the Public Works Department is actually doing very, very well. Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak at this time? Yes, sir. Yes, sir? John?
John Rogero, Stockbridge Avenue. All of the previous speakers are correct in many ways. They're all Atherton residents, and they deal with the police here. I consider myself more of an expert than you gentlemen. I was a San Francisco police officer 30 years in the command division, finally, in charge of 200 officers. My son, John, is an officer in the Richmond District in San Francisco today. Atherton is comparable pay to the other large, to the larger cities, which is fine. The Atherton police are fine. I belong to two organizations. The Police Officers Association retired in San Francisco. That's one unit with 900 members. I belong to the active members of P O A, which deals with the city as well, in their hiring, firing, and so on. But they do not allow, in either one of these units in any other city, civilian dispatchers, receptionists, whatever one I call them, to deal in this group. They are civilian employees. In San Francisco, there's many, many dispatchers, many, many meter checkers, many, many district attorney investigators. Only a sworn police officer allows it, allowed in these units. And this unit, they call the Atherton Police Association, is a separate unit from the police department. The great lieutenant here doesn't even belong to it, neither does the chief. And they boost up their membership by bringing in these civilians, which is all right. But I agree, the officers should get comparable pay to the other cities. But in San Francisco presently, the officers, my son included, pay 10 and 1/2% of their salary, not pay, put it in holding till they retire as a retirement fund. In July 1st, it's going up to 13 and 1/2%. Atherton pays zero, the officers, for this. They should pay like every other city. Santa Cruz are paying the 20%. In fact, right now, they're having a class of officers in San Francisco, 40 officers, that are Santa Zsa officers, that are going there because they pay less there. But the officers do a great job under the chief. What we've got now is unbelievable. We've got it in the last four chiefs. I can tell you items about those chiefs, curl your hair, but I'm not going to. And the lieutenant, who is the second-in-command, there's only he and the second-in-command. But outsourcing, I'm not even interested in that. I'm just interested that we pay them comparable, and they pay their just dues to the city for the retirement in CalPERS.
Thank you very much. We're still in public comments? Any other member of the public like to speak on this item?
A question, if I may. Who makes up the negotiating committee versus the Police Officers Association?
So Lou, from the town's perspective, the city manager will be negotiating from the town's perspective. From the A P O A, they have a negotiating team.
You're the only person?
Myself, and we hired a representative from Renee Sloan in...
Secai.
Secai.
It's a labor law. Labor law.
Labor relations firm.
He's not an attorney, but he works for a law...
Yeah. He's not an attorney, but he works for a law firm. He's, he used to be the chief negotiator for the San Francisco city and county. And so he's a professional that does labor negotiations.
So any other member of the public? Okay. I'm going to close the public comments, and thank you all for your comments. We appreciate you coming out to express your opinions about this important issue. As this item was intended just for your benefit, for the public input, there's, and the information that has already been shared by the city manager through his report, we are not going to have council discussion on this item, because the negotiations have not been opened, and the meeting conference is in progress. So we will move on to item number 17. So if you just came for that item, you can leave now. The item number 17 is discussion and direction. Information on relationship between the town of Atherton and the San Mateo County Library J P A. This item is a result of a colleague's memo that was written and presented to council by Vice Mayor Carlson and Councilmember Weest. It was presented to council last meeting, and it was voted to bring to council as an agenda item. We have a staff report that has been prepared by the city manager and city clerk. I'm wondering, who would like to present?
I can do that.
Would you like to do that?
I can. Section 5.2 of the Atherton Council Rules and Procedures allows two or more council members to prepare a colleague's memo and put that on the agenda, and with the council's permission, put that request onto a future agenda for discussion. Vice Mayor Carlson and Councilmember Weest submitted a colleague's memo at the equal meeting, requesting that an item be added to the May meeting, dealing with the relationship between the town and the San Mateo County Library System J P A. The item was unanimously approved at the equal meeting, so it's here this evening for discussion. The recommendation is for discussion and possible action of the following items. Instructing staff to look at all feasible options available for maintaining and enhancing library services to town residents compared to the cost of such services being provided by the J P A. Instruct the city representative to the J P A to advocate for the return of donor funds to the town at the end of each fiscal year. Instruct the city attorney to undertake any and all means to ensure the ownership of donor funds lies with the city, and that in the event if Atherton elects to withdraw from the J P A, Atherton Library property tax money will be allocated to the town for providing library services. Instruct the Civic Center Task Force to study the size of the library as a high agenda item, with a recommendation of the council by the July council meeting. That concludes the staff report. The council can discuss.
So, Vice Mayor Carlson, would you like to add any comments to this?
Yeah, I have some comments I would like to make. I think it's appropriate that we take time to make an assessment of the relationship that the town has with the County Library J P A. It's almost analogous to what we've gone through with another regional organization. Bill and I acted as an ad hoc committee with the South Bay Waste Management Organization, and it's resulting in a change, a proposed change in corporate governance. The J P A represents 12 agencies, providing library services to these agencies. There have been some relationship problems. Some of these are detailed in the memo, but I'll just quickly go over them. Getting answers to our financial questions has been an ongoing struggle. It's been like pulling teeth to get answers to some of Atherton's, regarding Atherton's financial account within the J P A. Over three years since the first inquiries were made, finally learned that Atherton, not the county, paid for the needs assessment project performed by the county. The transparency is not obvious. The purpose of the colleague's memo is to initiate this assessment. Should Atherton remain as one of the 12 members of J P A, or should Atherton opt out and become independent, like Mellow Park and Rapid City? County has control over what and how charges are made against the revenues from Atherton taxpayers. Potola Valley and Woodside are both donor cities, but they're in a much different position. Atherton is accumulating about $900,000, or $700,000 to $900,000 a year in donor funds, which are the taxes that are paid by Atherton residents, over and above the costs that are being incurred to maintain the Atherton Library. So Woodside and Potola Valley's amount are much less. So Atherton is in a unique position in terms of the other 12 agencies within the J P A. There's adequate time to undertake an assessment and plan for the future. These organizations, like the South Bay Waste Management, take on identities of their own, they develop their own special interests. I think that there ought to be more flexibility as to what we can do about, more flexibility than's been shown by the J P A to date, in terms of what can be done with the donor funds. This lack of transparency regarding the transactions, the J P A subtracts from the Atherton revenues. We don't see a bill of claims like we do when it's on our own books, where we can see each transaction that comes out of a particular fund. The J P A puts together an annual budget, a detailed budget. The Atherton council does not see that detailed budget before it goes to board of supervisors and is approved. The J P A has veto power over the town's use of its donor funds. The J P A's application of indirect costs assigns weightings to Atherton based on an additional county population of 9,000 residents, whose taxes are not credited to the Atherton account. The J P A has a narrow definition as to what can be made, what used to be made of donor funds in terms of library services. Recently, the J P A decided no longer to forward donor funds to town's books, but to retain at the county level. So let's take a look at the possible options for providing library services during the assessment process. Going independent would allow, would give council and town residents more direct control of the types of library services. As an independent library, you could choose to have services provided by another library system or a third party. You'd have greater control and transparency regarding costs and budget, allow redefinition of library services for using donor funds. An assessment should look at both the pros and cons of staying with the J P A. The J P A does benefit us in many ways, as well as looking at the other alternatives, the pros and cons of the other alternatives. Being unique and having never done an evaluation of J P A is the best alternative for delivering, what is the best alternative for delivering Atherton library services? Behooves the council to undertake such an evaluation. What are the options that should be evaluated? What are the pros and cons? We have the luxury of being able to do this, whereas with the South Bay Waste Management, we're locked in because of bonds that the agency has issued, and we wouldn't be able to get out of that particular agency without paying millions of dollars. At the same time, the assessment is being made, we need to clear up questions as to what happens if Atherton does elect to leave the J P A in terms of future tax money and donor funds. There are legal questions that need answering, and maybe some legal action will be required. Same time, we should be asking the J P A to reconsider withholding future donor funds from Atherton, that they should be passed through to the town. We ought to explore with the J P A changing the approval process for using donor funds by broadening the definition of uses, allowing the town to make the decision without the J P A's approval. We ought to explore council seeing and approving budget detail before J P A adopts and receiving monthly listing of transactions charged to Atherton County, and remove the additional weighting on indirect charges of outside residents and determine these charges. The third item in the memo deals with the coming to grips with the library size as being one of the early town center decisions. I think the key thing here that of concern is the ad hoc committee not just adopt the conclusions in the needs assessment, where the formula for core library services assigned over 16,000 residents to the equation. Therefore, the 9,800 to 13,000 square foot numbers need to be questioned. These are the J P A numbers. Why start now? I think time is a factor. Six months, perhaps, to do an evaluation, look at the alternatives, and make a decision before July 1 next year, which would be the deadline. If the council should decide to look at some of their alternative besides the J P A, they have to initiate action by July 1 of next year. It would take a whole year then, before, if it was decided to leave the J P A, it would take a whole year before that would actually happen. So it's a long process. So part of the evaluation process is talk to other providers and milk them for their ideas about Atherton's library in the future. Don't rely just on the J P A staff for guidance. Establishing ownership of the library tax revenue stream is important. If you elect to leave the J P A, we'll want to be certain that the library tax dollars follow along and can't be withheld by the J P A. I think my colleague would like to give you a few words.
Sure. Thank you, Jerry. It's clear what Jerry is saying. I am completely behind everything that he said. I think this is something that, I don't know how we got to this point, and how we lost the control, but I think as council members, we have to make some decisions coming up in the near future, that I think we deserve to know some answers and get some direction and maintain some control of tax revenue that Atherton contributes to the J P A, to the library system itself. As we move forward to make decisions on how to, or what we're going to do with the master plan and develop a library, I think we owe it to our residents to have more control of the funds that frankly, we currently don't control. I think we need to understand the legal ramifications and the process, which is going to take time for us to make decisions, and what are those ramifications if we do decide to opt out of the J P A. So, you know, I think this is an important step. I think these are important decisions we need to find out prior to, we're moving forward with our master plan. We have a lot of big decisions to make, and there's a lot of money involved here, and money of which we really don't control, that I think that we should re- obtain control of. And I think that would serve our residents better, and it would help us make good decisions in the near future, so.
Thank you. Do you have to comment?
Sure. Sure. Thanks. Thanks for you guys bringing this forward. First off, you know, I'd like to say that, you know, we had a discussion about this back in November, and I think it might have been worthwhile to have some of the findings, Bill, that we had also included in the staff report. Perhaps, maybe in the future, we'll have those, because I think that they're pertinent. But regardless, you know, make no mistake about it, from my perspective, any tax dollars that Atherton has sent up to the J P A belong to Atherton. And I do think that in recent times, when the other board members from the other communities, many of whom do not have any funds at all, decided that perhaps our tax dollars should be kept up at their location and under their cognizance, as opposed to here, as it had been for a number of years, that was an eye-opener. And in fact, you know, they pass their rules on a regular basis. So the towns that have can have their money reallocated by those that have not. Now, so we need to make sure that we have good guidelines. Our tax dollars, we've gone without what I think is adequate library capabilities here for quite some time, and it'll be, and even if we were to start today, it's still going to take some time. So I do believe that we need to have cognizance, we need to have accountability on our funds. So I do believe that we need to have cognizance, we need to have accountability on our funds. So I'm very, very focused on, I guess, the items that are listed here in number two and number three. I guess in number one, I'd like to really understand what the ramifications are. I don't want to lose any of our money and I don't want to have some of the state laws be applicable to us where if we eliminate a position, we'll still be obligated to pay for those type of positions, which is more or less of a union protection issue that had been passed a couple of years ago in Sacramento. With regards to number four, you know, we do have the task force that is charged with looking into the master plan as well as the facilities that are going to be here. And so having them participate in this, I think, is a key item. However, I also would like to caution, as I brought up once before, I do think that a key component in assessing library needs is understanding really what's going on in libraries and asking for some help from some of the professionals. We do have a librarian who is assigned here, and I think that honestly, he does have our best interest at heart. And I think that the people that are on the town center, not the town center task force, but the new community center advisory board, none of the people, there was not a transition or, you know, a big transition or an influx of people from both of the organizations. It was a reapply and then people got selected. So there is some potential information that's been lost and perhaps some expertise. So that expertise still is here in the community, but also that expertise is with our newly-assigned librarian, who actually has done a very good job over East Palo Alto. And I think that he could add some value. We don't have to take it all, but I think that we need to have some professional guidance as to where libraries are going and then make, of course, our own decision. How we spend our money is our business. And how big we want to make our library is our business because we're paying for it. But it will be a public library and we need to take consideration that when you have a brand-new library, more people will come. And so there will be somewhat of a growth in its usership. So I'd like to make sure that we do get the professional help from the JPA and that we also spend some time with the people from Menlo Park. Even if we were not to be part of the JPA officially, we still are going to be part of the Peninsula Library System, just the same as Redwood City is today, the same as Menlo Park it would be today. They actually, I've spoken to both of the librarians, and they sing the praises of the library system, the fact that anybody, anywhere can order a book and it shows up, whether it's in their library, which is run by Menlo Park, and the book comes from Atherton and we're part of the JPA. So staying in that system will provide a great service and it's a very reasonable cost, according to the people at Menlo Park. So hopefully, we'll look into that in the assessment. But I do think that we need to have some professional guidance in implementation of number four. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll kind of wind up here a little bit and respond to Councilmember Widmer's plea for the new Community Center Advisory Group to look at the library size and to reconnect with the members of the former Library Steering Committee, who has done a lot of lab work in the research and use the expertise of the librarians and the library system. On our organizational meeting on April 30th, an ad hoc committee was formed by the committee. Three members are actually doing that specific thing. They are connecting with members of the library staff and members of the former Library Committee to get downloads and have that transfer of information done. So be, you know, feel good about that, that that is being done. The Library JPA, like Councilwoman Carlson said, there are 12 members of CMTO County Cities who belong to it. Of those 12, only three have excess donor funds. That's Woodside, Potola Valley, and Atherton. Potola Valley used a lot of their funds to build their new library a few years ago. They now only have $2 million in their excess donor funds. Woodside only has about $600,000. So they're using a good portion of that to do some remodel. But Atherton, by far and away, has over $6 million, and that has, it's a big number and it's growing every year. So we really need to make sure that we use that money conservatively and figure out how we can use it in other ways rather than just brick and mortar, which seems, the JPA agreement is a little specific and yet a little vague. And on May 6th, and I'm the JPA representative, the JPA meeting, I requested that the board discuss the JPA agreement more fully to define what donor city funds could be used for. And it was unanimously agreed by every member of the JPA at that meeting that there would be a study session held to specifically look at the JPA agreement in reference to the donor city funds. Because the JPA, our donor city funds, so there's only three cities, but the whole JPA board kind of has power over it. So the 12 members have to agree, at least in the majority. So I just, $1.9 million of our property tax revenue that you and I pay goes to library services every year. A million dollars of that is spent by the Library JPA to operate our library, a million dollars to operate our little library over there, of which $900,000 is left over and that goes into our library donor city funds. So we don't have any control over how the Library JPA spends that money until it's all spent. We don't get to approve a line item budget, which is something that Vice Mayor Carlson is really pushing to unravel.